Mr. Bloom, it's a pleasure to see you. And so I'm going to let you open up this session and I am sure that we will be very blessed with your two incredibly talented co-chairs to be able to speak as well. So, Mr. Bloom, would you like to introduce everybody?
Yes, thank you very much. A little bit loud, sorry about that. But I want to thank you, I want to thank the school board for this evening and coming together and learning a little bit more about the ACSD report and the recommendations that they have for you. I want to thank the ACSD for our partnership with them, an opportunity throughout this year to talk about some of the perspectives from our parent community and other stakeholder groups around our services for students with disabilities, an opportunity to partner around our special education conference and some of the other ways that we interface with the ACSD. We had a great opportunity at the meet and greet, which was held just last week, to meet a number of parents and community stakeholders and to really engage in some good conversation around not only commendations and things that our community thinks are going well for our students with disabilities, but also to talk about some other recommendations and areas that we need to explore a little bit more for our students with disabilities. So, that was a great opportunity through that meet and greet and we look forward to continued collaboration and opportunities for that with the ACSD. So, I wanted to introduce our co-chairs of the ACSD. We have Sheri Belkowitz and Connie Lorenson. And we also have other members of our Department of Special Services available should they be needed for comment. We have Ann Long, Coordinator of Career and Transition Services, Dr. Jane Strong, who is our Director of the Office of Procedural Support, and of course Teresa Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent of Special Services. And we also have some other members of ACSD that are... Yep, yep, so we have Toby and Judy in the back. So, I'm going to turn things over to Sheri, who will get us started on the report.
Thank you so much. We're really glad to be here. I'm glad the weather held out for us. Last year was pretty bad. I just ordered some soup on the way over from the Chinese restaurant and it came with a fortune and it said, "You are the center of every group's attention."
Don't tell Sam that, please.
No, he knows already. Okay, so this is, is this the clicker that'll work? Okay, so this... Okay, look, this is our happy group. We had, this is the first time we've taken a group photo and this was such a good group this year. And you can see every, all the happy, smiling faces. You see Mrs. Schultz's happy, smiling face. So, it really was a great group and I wanted to thank the school board members for appointing... We did have a lot of new members this year, so there was a big learning curve, but we had a really great group. There are a couple of people missing from this group, but it's almost everybody. So, here is a list of our membership, which is also available on the website. We also are fortunate to have FCPS personnel who act as advisors to the ACSD. So, we appreciate Mike Bloom, Teresa Johnson, Jane Strong, and Mary Beth Harrison Cunningham, who provides us with monthly updates for the PRC. They don't vote, but they are members. They're consultants, yes.
And they provide help with presentations.
Right. We also work with the school board through our liaison, Elizabeth Schultz. And we also work, I mentioned Assistant Superintendent Johnson, who attends our monthly meetings. So, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the ACSD is a legally required committee. Not all of the citizen advisory committees are legally required. I believe only three are legally required. So, we have to make sure that we follow the legal requirements and the legal mandates under Virginia law.
All on our website as well.
So, right, these are all on the website. And the, over the past few years that I've been the Chair of the Advisory Committee, we've been working towards fulfilling more and more of these goals. So, I think it's really important that everybody be familiar with the goals of the ACSD so we can ensure that we are appropriately and legally participating. So, this year, we had a fabulous special education conference. If you have not attended, I strongly recommend that you attend next spring. We had 52 seminars on many topics and 84 exhibitors. Our keynote speaker spoke on transition planning for children with disabilities. We also had, for the first time, we had a student strand that was coordinated with the I'm Determined program. And we, and each year, the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities helps to facilitate the first class awards, which are awards for individuals to demonstrate inclusion of students with disabilities in their schools and in their communities. My personal thought is that I would love to see this be an education conference if we talk about inclusion. I would love for it to just be an education conference. And there, even this year, we had programs that were relevant for Gen Ed students, including transition planning, executive functioning, and I think it can be really helpful. And I also have a concern that parents may not want to attend because it does disclose that they have a child with a disability. So, for privacy, I think it would be helpful to change it to an education conference instead of a special education conference. So, this year, we restructured the ACSD to conform with the legal requirements. In the past, we have had a school board charge that has been the main focus of the entire committee. Last year, we introduced an unmet needs subcommittee and this year, we aligned our focus with the law, but we also respected the school board's charge, which was the transition planning. So, for the first time, we had new subcommittees. We had family engagement and outreach, student achievement and outcomes, policy and regulations, and then the school board charge. So, if the school board continues to give us charges, it will be one of the subcommittees. I attended two statewide programs on CACs. We're also one of the only school districts that doesn't call it a CAC, a Special Education Advisory Committee, which makes it a little bit harder, I think, for parents to find us. But I learned very quickly that we were the only jurisdiction in both of those programs that only worked on a charge. Everybody else was researching and defining unmet needs and we were working on a charge. So, I don't want to forego the charge, but I do want to make sure we fulfill our legal obligations. We also have bylaws. This, we're just like IEPs, we have a triennial review of our bylaws, so this year is a bylaw review. We have a follow-up subcommittee and we have the nominating committee. So, I can start with the Family Engagement and Outreach Subcommittee. And so, this is fulfilling one of our legal purposes, which is involving parents and helping to determine what the unmet needs are of parents. And the Family Engagement and Outreach Subcommittee is working hard to publicize the existence of the advisory committee. So, we're a school district that has approximately 29,000 students with IEPs and we never get more than 10 people who attend our meetings. And we, I don't think I've ever had more than five public comments. So, I've had many parents who've said, "What is this ACSD? I've never heard of it." We did make a brochure that we would like to see distributed more widely. It is at the Parent Resource Center, but I think it would be really helpful if it was at the IEP tables at the various schools so that we can fulfill our purpose and also so we can gather information before it reaches a toxic level. We can problem solve. So, the Family Engagement and Outreach Subcommittee, again, they said they wanted to make sure parents were aware of the ACSD and the meetings. And as you know, there was a report on WAMU about restraint and seclusion. We did not have a single parent speak to us on restraint and seclusion. So, I think we need to do a better job of promoting the advisory committee.
And I'd just like to say that we have, on the committee, we have representatives of the SEPTA and Fairfax County Council, PTAs, and although they were members, they as well brought nothing to the committee on those issues. So, it's really, you know, even when members sit on the committee, sometimes these issues don't come forward.
So, this subcommittee recommended that we produce and distribute the brochure. So, we do have the brochure. I believe it was translated into, I think, maybe Spanish and Korean. I have, I have a big bag here if someone wants to look through, but...
We can let them know.
Yeah. It was translated, but it's still not... I've been to a few schools where I've seen it sitting in the, in the front lobby, but I don't know that I, as a parent, would take it to read it, but if it was sitting at the IEP table, I think I might look at it. And we also would like to see that the website be updated to include a, an email address that goes directly to the advisory committee. And staff can be obviously included on that as well, but parents, right now, if they reach out to the link on the website, it goes to a school board inbox. So, I'm not even sure who gets that email. We can do a test and see where it goes, but... And the report has a lot more detail, obviously, with other recommendations, too. So, the Student Achievement and Outcomes Subcommittee, they looked at data to determine how Fairfax is meeting the needs of students with disability and to make the recommendations. So, these were areas that they looked at, mostly with looking at the indicators from VDOE. And the graduation rates, I believe, met the indicator, but we'd like to see improved graduation rates of students with IEPs. We want to improve dropout rates, so reduce dropout rates. And we also wanted to look at the reasons, if there's anybody following, why students are dropping out. We want, we're hoping Fairfax can look, investigate on the achievement gap between students with disabilities and Gen Ed students. And there was an overall theme among the committees to look at the differences in disabilities. So, a student with autism may not perform as well as a student with maybe a hearing loss or... So, we would like to see some differentiation in terms of reporting of these statistics. And we did not reach the state target for the least restrictive environment and a lot of that probably has to do with the fact that we have, is it eight, seven, seven or eight individual schools that are 100% students with disabilities, like Key Center and... Name another one. Kilmer Center, yeah, yeah. So, that's a Quander Road. So, those all factor in, so we have not met that indicator, but I think that we can make greater efforts to include students in the least restrictive environment. I mentioned that we want to get, disaggregate the data based on disability. Targeting training to the next instructional level, so it seems like there is, the information isn't always shared, even though it's in the student's file, but if a student's not passing their SOLs and then they move on to the middle school or the high school, there needs to be a flag on that file so we can take additional steps to ensure passage. Fairfax, we discussed this last year also, that Fairfax should more aggressively incorporate universal design for learning into the instruction and promote documentation on inclusionary practices. And I know that Mike Bloom, this year at the special education conference, we had Inclusion Way Hall, we had Inclusion Hall. So, we had some schools that came and they promoted what, what programs and activities they're doing to promote inclusion. And I believe there's an Intranet database so schools can access ways to promote inclusion, but we'd like to see that implemented more widely. Develop documentation on best practices for inclusion and enhance mentorship of provisionally licensed special education teachers outside of building level support and the Great Beginnings Program. The Policy and Regulation Subcommittee mostly worked on the Strategic Governance Manual and the guidelines on the use of physical restraint and seclusion. Their, their recommendations on the Strategic Governance Manual were to make it more disability-friendly. A lot of the language doesn't include students with disabilities and it talks about high achievement levels versus reaching a child's potential. It also talks about, or the committee also proposed having a protocol in place for students who are not proficiently reading by third grade. And also, the Governance Manual discusses raising expectation levels and as we learned from the special education conference last year, that when you raise expectations of a student, they rise to meet it. So, we need to raise expectations for all of our students. The guidelines on the use of physical restraint and seclusion, I'm sure some of these you've heard already, but there seems to be a lack of clear, clearly defined definitions. It was open to a lot of interpretations, seemed to be a bit of a problem. So, these are just some of the examples. Definition of what is immediate danger, what is severe student behavior, also protocols that should be used before restraint and seclusion, analyzing the antecedent behaviors before you use restraint and seclusion because it's really only supposed to be used in an emergency situation. Obviously, the reporting of restraint and seclusion. And the Subcommittee even proposed that any instances of restraint and seclusion be included in the IEP team document, the IEP team discussion and the IEP document itself. The school board charge of transition planning, we had a lot of great speakers, including Ann Long, who came and talked to us about a lot of the really wonderful programs Fairfax has. And I have made my way around the state and Fairfax really has some outstanding transition programs. I think the biggest problem is getting the information to the parents, especially when you're the parent of a child with a disability. You are, you may be overwhelmed, you may be getting lots of papers home, lots of documents. So, some of this gets lost in translation, but there are some tremendous programs in Fairfax County. So, one of the concerns was that there are 10, approximately 10,000 students in Fairfax County that are of transition age, which would be the IEP in which the child turns 14 or during eighth grade, whichever comes first. But only, it's on the next page, I think only 1,400 parents received training on, on transition planning. So, that's a very small percentage and I think a lot of times, IEP teams also forget that parent training is a related service. And when I go to IEP meetings, I make sure that whatever protocols are being used at school are being emulated at home, so there's continuity of service and continuity of systems that are being used. So, there is, we do have a transition toolkit, but it's 42 pages. We have a, the teachers have 104-page transition guide. So, I think the biggest takeaway from this is that we would like some consolidated information. And to be honest, I tried to make one myself. I thought, "I'll just do one and provide it and it'll be great and you can amend it." It's hard to get all the information into one page and I tried to do two-sided, one-page. So, it is hard. There's a lot of information. But I do think that it has to be highly individualized and I really recommend that parents have an opportunity to be included, to have meetings with the ETRs at the school, to be provided all the information and to be done so before it's too late. A lot of times, we do vocational testing when the child is a junior and then it's too late for them to take some academies and to enroll in various classes. So, we really have to look at when we're doing some of the transition planning. Of course, there are unrealistic career goals. You know, I have lots of students that aspire to be professional football players, but we do have to look at being a little bit more realistic. So, here are some more recommendations. So, this is the, the simple is the keyword guide and it does say one page, but I think that's really hard. But I think offering the information in various ways would be really helpful. So, we are recommending a video that parents can access, maybe even a seminar, and honestly, this benefits Gen Ed students as well to get information about transition planning. And the Subcommittee would like to see the events rotated to different parts of the county. I know that's been a big issue with the special education conference. Apparently Fairfax, parents don't like to travel very far, but if we could maybe offer some programs on... Do you know, every year, we've had it at Hayfield and parents were up in arms that the special ed conference was at Hayfield because it was so far? So, this year, we responded and we had it at Lake Braddock. So, yes, parents... Parents don't want to travel, apparently, so, but I think... Listen, I live by South County, so I go wherever, but... So, I do think it would be nice to have, put it on the YouTube channel for the PRC, the Parent Resource Center, lots of options, but it has to be delivered in multiple ways because I know when you hand a parent a packet of papers at the end of the IEP meeting, it goes in the special pile and... The special pile. So, that's why I think some one-on-one attention would be really helpful. We'd like to see that a satisfaction survey is sent out and received as many as possible, but I know currently it's, I think, a random selection process, yeah. And then we do need to provide training to all secondary special education teachers and ETRs annually. And, and I mean, I can speak from experience when, you know, we do have Naviance, but Naviance is not the answer for all students. Some students need individualized assistance with identifying colleges that are friendly to students with learning differences and Naviance doesn't tell you that. So, so we could use some support in that. We had a meet and greet. I'm so happy. I think it was two years ago that I sat here and we talked about having an ACSD open house, town hall meeting, and we got a lot of support from, from the school board members, so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate Mike Bloom for making it happen during a really hectic, busy time of the year. And we got positive feedback from, from everybody who went, but we did get consistent feedback that, "What is the ACSD?" Most of the parents who attended heard about it through social media, on individuals' Facebook pages or from SEPTA. They did not hear about it from their schools. We did not have a huge turnout, but we'd like to do another one in the fall. So, we broke the participants up into two groups. It was the lower age, elementary and preschool, and then middle school and high school. I did not include the list, the entire list of, of issues and I, like Dr. Braybrand, split my time, so I wasn't in either room for the entire time, but I could give you a little flavor of what we saw. So, there was positive feedback. A lot of it seemed like it was identifying a specific person who went above and beyond. So, we appreciate that and we did get a lot of nominations this year, a record number of nominations for the first class award, so... Yes, like, yeah, forty-some on.
It was like forty-some and that's a very significant increase. We worked with staff and put together an online way to do the nominations and sent it out to staff and it was very, very, very good way to increase the program.
And anyway, there were some very impressive nominations. Some were not as inclusive-based as, as the award is intended to be, but there are some very impressive special education teachers. And that's, that came out at this meeting for the preschool and elementary school. But these are some of the common, the common areas of need and it's fairly consistent with the older group. A lot of parents talked about that they had to, that they take their children out of school early because they need to take them to private therapies because occupational therapy and speech therapy are not being provided at the school. And then they often get dinged because they're told that their child's not making progress because the parent's pulling them out early. A lot of inconsistencies between schools and between staff. People are being told different things by different people. They feel like the IEP meetings are more oppositional instead of collaborative and that's very unfortunate. Students who have not received the appropriate number of hours that are identified in the IEP, students who are not receiving the accommodations that are identified in the IEP. And parents don't know what options are available and there's an inherent imbalance of power when you're in an IEP meeting with teachers with whom you trust your children every day and who attend IEP meetings on a regular basis. And as a parent, you walk in not knowing the lingo and not knowing what's available and you are at the mercy of the school.
Before she goes on, one of the things that came up in the middle school, high school group that I'd really like the board to be aware of was, parents were very pleased to learn that attended, and I would say there was between 50 and 60 people in attendance, very pleased to find out that Fairfax County had a plethora of specialists available. And they were surprised that these specialists were available and their school seemed resistant or failed to adequately use those resources to help them meet their child's needs. One man actually said that the team told him that they didn't know what to do or how to provide what the student needed. He said, "And they didn't, they didn't go to the specialists and they didn't tell us about the specialists." So, I think it would be good if the board did a little discussing about how the systemic operation of Fairfax should work with regard to the central office staff and local schools and, and should local schools be able to simply not utilize that resource? Tax, I'm a citizen and taxpayer and pay a lot of money for those resources and those are wonderful resources. So, I would like to know that every principal is using them and I'd like to see it as part of the principal evaluation. So, I wish the board would discuss that. I don't think we ought to look at exactly, you know, how they do it, but they ought to show that they're using those resources to meet the needs of their community.
I have to agree and since, since I am the center of the meeting, I will, I will share a story about my own son who, who, sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders, but my son has a relationship with Sarah Kuner. And he will call Sarah Kuner when he gets his test results back and say, "I got a 97 on my test." So, he does also enjoy, enjoy, yes, a good relationship. And so, she came to our school to meet with some folks, including my son Sam.
And so she came to our school to meet with some folks, including my son Sam. And I was met at the front door by the principal, who said to me, "Why do you keep calling central office?" And I had not called central office. It was the relationship that my son had developed with Sarah Kuner that caused her to be at the school. And I said, "If you had a heart attack and the head of cardiology offered to look at your case, would you decline?" And he said, "Good point." But I can tell you, going to various schools throughout the county, that some schools will actively reach out to the dyslexia specialist, and other schools want nothing to do with that. And there's an atmosphere of fear. And for parents, it's coming up, but there is a fear of retaliation when you call central office or you go above the principal. They also, the younger group also had concerns with ESY, and that is something that I've heard throughout the past couple of years. So this is for the older group. It was, it was a lot. I mean, Dr. Braybrand can speak to it. It was very emotional. It was not intended to be really an individual event session. But parents had real concerns, and they wanted to have an opportunity to make those concerns known.
I was actually pretty impressed with how well they kept to issues and topics and not delved into the individual specifics.
So these are, these are just a list. And this is available for staff after the meeting. So they, the parents mentioned that they were disturbed that they did not learn about the meet and greet until someone told them about it. There are challenges with twice-exceptional, lack of inclusion, a lot of the same issues that we've heard year after year. Lack of consistency in services. Services based upon the school programs and schedule versus the needs of the child, which I see that quite frequently.
And then one in particular that I was stunned to hear because back in 2007, the advisory committee, after working on the issue of schools telling parents that children had to give up their accommodations to take IB or AP in middle school or high school, the committee must have worked three or four years on that. And in 2007, we actually voted and sent a letter of no confidence to Jack Dale, at which time he took action. And I have the letter that he sent to the, at home, to the Directors of Student Services. He put together a chart. He directed the Directors of Student Services to clarify that. He made it, he put the law in. And we all know there have been dear colleague letters on this. And everyone who's knowledgeable about the law knows this is inappropriate. As an educator, and I did teach for a decade, and I have a degree in education, I find myself wondering, is this a kind of a business issue? Is this something where if a teacher is difficult, if a school, like, has trouble with a specific teacher, an IB or an AP teacher refusing those accommodations, is it, is it a guidance counselor who's sort of saying, "Well, you can't get those there," you know, because they know it's going to be a fight all year? And they know the child's going to be upset, and it's going to be problems, maybe grades problems. I know of one student, a number of years ago, who didn't graduate because the school wouldn't let him out of an AP class, and the teacher wouldn't give him his accommodations. And so, so I'm just saying, I don't really know the answer to this. But the district needs to look at this. Is this, are principals responsible for this? Who's responsible? And how is it being enforced? You know, if it's against, if it's against the law, then how is Fairfax County ensuring that it's not happening in their schools? Because I was stunned to hear it was still happening. And I felt it very naive, you know? And it's a big organization. And you have, you know, a lot of different people out there to be informed. So I thought that was something that you all really need to be aware of. Still an issue out there.
Right. And I think that parents were consistently saying that there are differences among schools and inconsistency in how the law is being implemented. And I can tell you about a Spanish teacher that said a certain child could not use a pencil, even though the IEP said that the child needed to use a pencil. So I know many cases where accommodations are not provided. And it does say, "Sense of fear or retaliation if central office is contacted," which just really shocks me because as an adult, you need to know who to contact if you don't have the answer. You know, even going to law school, I didn't have to memorize every law, but I needed to know where to find it or who to contact to ask for advice. So I'm not sure why staff are so worried that they're going to be punished if they contact an expert. So this is what our website looks like. Like I said before, it says, "Submit a question." And I don't know, I was told it goes to a school board inbox. But I don't, they don't come to us, which makes it hard for us to determine what needs are out there.
And other schools, other, other CAC, local CACs.
Yes. So other local CACs have the list of their members and their email addresses, or they'll have their executive committee in the email addresses. We're just asking for one, one centralized email address. And it can be available to Mike as well. It's not, it's not a secret. Because I, I, when parents make public comment at our meetings, I provide their contact information to Mike or to Jane or Teresa so that if I feel like that they need a response, that they can respond directly to them. So it's not about trying to, you know...
Our names are on the webpage. This doesn't show it. But all the committee members' names are listed. There's just no way to contact us.
So this year, the members of the advisory committee voted to increase our terms to three-year terms, which is more consistent with our neighboring jurisdictions. And one of the reasons why we discussed this and voted on this was because we did have so many new members this year. And it took us a really long time to get everybody acclimated and up and running. And special education is a very complex area. And learning all the services and learning the laws is very difficult. And I do a quiz at the first meeting, a Kahoot quiz. And I focused it on transition services. And I think that we failed miserably. So I don't think that most of our members knew anything about transition services. So it would be helpful for continuity. I know there has been concern about members who are not showing up. And I did have to send a letter to an appointing organization saying that a member has had a certain number of unexcused absences and let them know, and they chose to appoint somebody else. So I think that there are mechanisms to remove people who are not attending rather than having the reappointment annually. So that's something I wanted to bring to the school board's attention. And there are some CACs that have five-year terms. But we had a long discussion about two or three years, and the group voted on the three years. The next regular school board meeting is June 13th. So please include your appointees on the consent agenda. Because this happens every year. And we want to make sure that, please, make sure the clerk has the names of the people you're appointing so we can hit the ground running. We're planning on having a retreat in September. You're all invited. It's going to be at the PRC because I don't believe a lot of our members have ever been to the PRC, which is a great resource. So we are having a retreat orientation at the PRC in September. Information to September 7th or 14th. Information will be forthcoming. So, but that would really help us hit the ground running each year if we didn't have a whole, more than half of our members were new this year. Okay, you're all invited, June 12th. We're a happy group. You saw the picture. So, yeah, so it's here. The meetings are here, so no excuses. You don't know how to get here. It's here. You're invited. We have food. And I kept the same quote that I liked alone. "We can do so little. Together, we can do so much." And that was Helen Keller. So if we have any questions, Connie will be happy to answer them. Oh, Teresa, it wasn't that bad, was it?
Ladies, thank you so much.
No, thank you. We've had a really good year. We've enjoyed it. And I'm really looking forward to the positive changes in the school system.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, I have a couple of board members that would like to speak. I don't have you on the list yet, Ms. Schultz, but if you'd like me to... Oh, actually, I do. You're following Ms. Keys-Gamara. Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Schultz, and Mr. Moon. You're first.
Well, thank you, ladies. I just feel like this is terribly important work. And I appreciate the seriousness with which you deal with it. And so I'm, you made a lot of recommendations in there, and I'm just going to go over a couple. One is going to be a suggestion, since I am the liaison for the Title I Group Committee. And so I would, I want to make sure there's a connection because I'm trying to make sure we spread the information. So I think it would be great if you guys can get on their calendar and vice versa, perhaps. The other thing is you had an entire section on restraint and seclusion. Thank you very much. I am in complete agreement and hope that we will use that as a guideline. Dr. Braybrand is still here. We will use that. We, the board has instructed the superintendent to look at what has happened. And I think that your language should be very helpful in that evaluation. I love the language that you were using, Ms. Belkowitz. You used the phrase, "learning differences." And also for our strategic plan, "high achievement levels versus reaching a child's potential." And I do think that we may need more input on how to, or looking at, have staff look at that because you really, we need to figure out a better way to measure growth as opposed to saying everybody is reaching for the same target. We do have that, but we have to acknowledge from where each child is, right? By name and by need. So I think what you're, overall, I had the idea that we're trying to change the culture. And I think that that is absolutely appropriate. And I am going to come back and ask... Dr. Braybrand knows I'm turning my head. He knows what word I'm going to say. Because our communication with our community is not as strong as I think it needs to be. And this is one of those areas where the community really suffers from not having, not knowing what we have available. And I think that goes part in parcel with changing the culture. Because if parents know what to expect, and we communicate clearly what that is, then we shouldn't be getting an attitude from whomever saying that you shouldn't be here, or you shouldn't be asking that question. And as a parent, I'll just use my last 18 seconds and use a, I'll come back. But as my son just graduated, and he's just told me something that a teacher told him in sixth grade. So we have to really be making it clear what we expect from our teachers because words can hurt, right? So I'll stop there. But thank you so much for what you're, you're doing. And we absolutely need to reach for that culture change.
Thank you. And I would also say, if you, if you look at the Supreme Court case, the Andrew F. case, that is more consistent with what we were aiming for, which is looking at the potential of the child versus the progress that each child makes because it's based on the unique needs of each child. So it's looking at the child's potential and if they're moving towards their potential. So if you haven't read Andrew F., yeah, I think you probably have. Andrew F., it's Andrew. It's, it sounds like Andrew, but it's with an E. Andrew F., it's this 2017 Supreme Court case. F is in friend, yeah.
Ms. Schultz.
Well, I'm going to say I'm really proud of this committee and its work and how well organized. They tackled a lot. They're people from very disparate walks and had different experiences. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meet and greet. I had already been scheduled. I was in one of our schools in the community speaking. Let me tell you, everything that you heard, you know, I mean, I feel it because I experience it. As you were talking, my, my special ed teacher was texting me saying, "We have to finish our IEP before June 6th." So I'm finalizing the plans, you know, with, with my own child's teacher to do just that. I just want to comment on a couple of things. Look, parents do not have time to advocate. When you have a special education child, and they don't need to even be, you know, profoundly impacted. But if you have more than one child, you likely have more than one disability that you're handling, and parents are drowning. So ACSD is, we have to do better at elevating it because it has a role to act sort of in absentia for parents because they're drowning. I know from personal experience. When you have multiple children with multiple disabilities, you are trying to navigate the system. And your point, which dovetailed to the previous presentation of a consistent issue, we have a consistent issue with communication. How do you simplify communication on how to even navigate the system for parents? For parents who are drowning? We need an easy button. And, you know, all of us have tried a little bit to make it easier for ourselves. But we need to commit to this as a, as a system. I am concerned that I didn't hear anything about S R and R protections. I am going to be bringing that up. I've said I'm bringing that up. I'm going to bring it up again for students with disabilities. We don't have that built in. I tried it in the past. I'm going to try it again. The presentation, I will say, was not gooey on our, on our system. For some reason, you couldn't open it up. You had to save it. So if we could fix that somehow so that parents could see and use this going forward, because they do have special education piles. I have, like, envelopes, you know, the brown envelopes that they come in. Everything stays in, and they all go in the same place. The transition planning for success for college is something that we're not doing. You know, I fear, because I have a senior graduating this year, I fear about their, their college readiness. And when I hear the statistics that 57% of our kids go on to four-year university, the reason I want to get that back as a metric is that only 60% of them are graduating within six years. I will bet you a huge percentage of those students who are not making it through college are college, are students with disabilities who did not have adequate transition services and will need additional help. I know I'm out of time, but put me on to go back because I have more.
Thank you. Mr. Moon.
But I'm sure, could I ask you to go to the next board member first and then come back?
Well, then I'll have Ms. McLaughlin.
I thought I was in a long queue. Okay, so I'll get started then. First of all, I want to echo what you've been hearing from our colleagues about the substance of your work this year. My appointee, Jane Wilson, has absolutely deeply enjoyed the work. And the group photo, I think, just speaks volumes to the collaboration that has existed. And to what Ms. Schultz was saying, this is now my eighth year on the school board. And I appreciate that in our eight years, through the leadership of Karen Garza and now Dr. Braybrand, this goal of becoming a caring culture, this goal of recognizing that we must collaborate with our families, things like dyslexia services, even utilizing and recognizing the word dyslexia for many years was not even the case. And now we've really tried to embed that in our services to our families. Those are milestones of progress. And I say that because I hope this is where we can celebrate that through your great work, through our parent advocates, we will continue to make progress in Fairfax County, to be really a flagship school system nationally. And when you're the 10th largest, it, there means there's only nine ahead of us in size. So the ability to really lead is critical. But the dedicated work that you all bring is so invaluable to us as board members. And I also want to say that your, your recommendations, very weighty. I will want to definitely spend more time reflecting on them. But just in reading them and in listening to your presentation, I want to spotlight that things like... I want to spotlight that things like disaggregating the data, your second bullet point, investigating the reasons, you know, why our statewide assessment scores for students with disabilities show significant gaps, then are the other subsets. I mean, these are all just critical pieces. And Ms. Schultz knows we've had a shared passion for student discipline reform and we absolutely need to be looking at how to improve the way our division handles MDRs and then having a better understanding between, you know, for the parents. Ms. Schultz, you said it so well. It is an extra challenge just to try and support your child in public schools. Then you layer on special needs. Then you layer on whether you've got a system that's going to be responsive and receptive and collaborative. And so I'll close with saying, I'm glad we're making progress, but please keep on doing what you're doing. And no, it's so appreciated.
If I could respond, because it was very troubling at the meet and greet to hear parents saying that they were... the parents were going for counseling or thinking about divorce because the amount of stress placed on them and the burden of not only having a child with a disability, but having to fight and learn how to navigate the system was just too overwhelming. So I feel like we have an ethical responsibility to help families. So, thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And I do have a couple of questions regarding a couple of recommendations that I saw in the report. You know, those are the recommendations that are closer to school boards, let's say jurisdiction, that are much more easily, perhaps, done. So first one is term limit, about one year versus three years. Three years. I have been on the board for some time to that case. So we, you know, whenever committee appointments come up, a couple of things that I personally sometimes wrestle with is finding a volunteer who's willing to serve, right? And then when someone serves, I just look at attendance record and then say, "Oh, okay, consistently serving and willing to serve," then my inclination is keep that person. Usually, you know, I have some appointees going for many years, many years. On some other committees, I have, you know, difficult time even finding one. And, you know, sometimes after a year, then person wants to resign and because it wasn't something that he or she might have thought would require, kind of work that required. So that I... as long as someone is willing to serve, I keep that person for... it's not going to be just one year. So one year versus three years doesn't really matter to me as long as if... even if someone gets a three-year term, if the person does not want to serve, then I have to let the person go and find a substitute. So to me, that there's really no difference between one and three. But the real difference comes in is this. Every four years, we have a school board election. If one new board member comes in, then generally it's going to be the new board member's pick for that particular spot. So but if you have a three years, for example, you have someone starting from July 1 this year and going for three years. We have an election coming up in November and there will be many new board members who come in January 1. They may want to have their own appointees. So that's also something you'll think about. As far as, you know, what you're saying about is a learning curve. It takes a certain amount of time to learn, very complex. And I always understand that some of the charges may need to take more than one year to complete, to work on. That's maybe we can give a longer, you know, longer-term charge rather than one-year charge. Okay, that's one. I know only nine seconds left. Another question is about strategic governance manual change. I don't know what you're asking. You asked about convening a task force to do what? Because we are... our governance committee has spent a lot of time looking at, you know, a change in modifying while amending, while cleaning up our governance manual. And this, I don't know if this has been ever brought to their attention, but I don't know what you're looking for from our strategic governance manual.
So the committee was hoping to have more language that was friendlier to students with learning differences. I don't have the manual in front of me to give you specific examples. Do you have the...
No, I don't.
He's meaning appointees to ACSD.
No, I was answering about the strategic...
Strategic governance manual. I hope that we are talking about, say, manual.
Okay.
It's not strategic plan. It's a strategic governance manual.
Okay, for the one-year term.
The one-year term versus the three-year term?
In terms of the strategic governance manual. I thought he had two separate questions.
They're taking about two separate things.
He's got two questions. His first question is associated with the term limit of how long appointees are on.
And the second one is changing strategic governance manual to become more sensitive to special education.
And we do have a member of that subcommittee here, but I believe it was that they were just looking for language that was more friendly to students with disabilities. There's sensitivity type of...
That portion, I don't quite understand what the language you're talking about. Because our governance manual, I don't think that deals with special necessarily.
You're talking about the strategic plan.
You're talking about strategic plan, not strategic governance manual.
Governance manual is about the term. The strategic plan is about the welcomeness around... yeah, the inclusivity around students with disability.
Actually, it says, "At the next revision of strategic governance manual, we recommend that school board convene a task force." I don't... you must be talking about strategic plan, not strategic governance manual.
It's a misnomer in your report.
We're talking about the plan. Is that what you said? Okay.
It sounds like a strategic... yeah, but you have strategic governance manual.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll take note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing that. And I appreciate what you're saying about the one-year terms. And I guess some of the appointees were appointed by the region super... assistant superintendents. And there... this year, there was a very high turnover rate for one reason or another. And so it made it really hard to move forward when we had so many new folks who did not know the personnel, did not know the lingo, did not know... have a comprehension of what we were even doing. So... but I appreciate that. Right, right. And we can... I can look at that more closely, too, and see. But I believe a lot of the region superintendents, for some reason, picked new people this year. And it was very... it was very hard to have a lot of new people all at one time.
Thank you. So I'm going to take my opportunity before we have Ms. Schultz going back. First is the language in the report regarding the LRI or the LRE. I'm sorry. And if... I'd like to better understand that because of the concerns of maybe our concentration of centers and if you have recommendations on how to address it in a bit more detail. Second is something that I've been talking to people about, just trying to noodle, is the question about how we do our academic preparation for teachers and our licensure and whether or not we need to, as a school system, when we have 27,000 students with IEPs and several more thousand with 504s, do you believe that we need to have a mandatory requirement for training in special ed for all teachers? And if so, should we be looking at doing that, at least with our universities throughout the state in our teacher prep programs? And love your language about dissemination of information to parents and using multi... multiple sources for doing that. I think that's really important. But then I have one last question, which is regarding IEPs. And some of this is coming out of your ACSD meet and greet, is how do we ensure fidelity of implementation of IEPs, the compliance piece? You know, Connie's known me a long time and I've always... when we first met, I was actually an executive where I had the compliance organization reporting to me at Verizon. So I kind of think that that's an area where we might need to do a bit more and just would like your insights in those three areas.
So those are pretty meaty areas to discuss. So I'll start with the least restrictive environment. The law says that children should be placed in the environment that they would be placed if they did not have a disability, which would be the gen ed environment at their neighborhood school. A lot of staff in Fairfax County think that children need to earn their way into the gen ed environment, rather than the default is the gen ed environment. And then if the gen ed environment is not working, that's when you look at placing them in special education services. And I think that they're... moving along to your second question, I think that there is a lack of training. I had recently an ABA specialist from Fairfax say that we could not put the child in the general education environment because it would involve modifications to the curriculum. And the law specifically says modifications to the curriculum is not a reason why you should keep a child out of gen ed. We also have students that have behavior problems. I would surmise, and there are studies that support this, that there are children who have behavior problems because they are in a special education setting. The special education settings many times are noisier. They have fewer children. The kids will emulate other children. So I've had parents say that my child never hit his head against the wall until we put him in the special ed class and now he hits his head against the wall like the other kids. So if we want children to emulate other children, we want them to really emulate the behaviors of neurotypical children in the gen ed environment. And let's face it, the world is a gen ed environment. So if you look at the preamble of IDEA, the goal is to ensure that children can become independent members of society and society is not a special education bubble. So does that answer your question about LRE? It's hard in Fairfax because we do have those schools that are 100% special education. So none of the children who attend Quander Road, Cedar Lane are considered accessing the gen ed environment except for students who do during the day make a trip over to Mount Vernon and participate with gen ed peers. I also think that parents are concerned because inclusion in gen ed is often not meaningful. I can give you an example of a little girl who is in predominantly special education and the IEP team said that they offered her a chance to join the gen ed class at lunch. And I said, "Well, that's not her class. We're asking a child with autism who has social challenges to leave her class and go to a class that's not her class." And I also figured out that her special ed lunch straddled the two gen ed classes. So we... so the team was asking her if she wanted to join a group of neurotypical children that were about to leave and then have lunch with another group of children who were about to arrive. And it was the same inclusion at recess. Because I said, "What time is her recess? When is the gen ed recess?" And she was straddling, too. But we're asking her to make social inroads that a lot of neurotypical children at the same age would be able to do. So they... and that IEP team also said that she was included in the general education environment in the hallways. Okay, so this is not meaningful inclusion. And again, it was involving adjustments to curriculum. So...
I've seen the same where the hours for inclusion were recess, hall, cafeteria time for their inclusion time. And again, they didn't mix with the general population during the lunchtime because they didn't know the children.
Now, I will say that that school... I applaud them because I proposed reverse inclusion for adaptive PE. So if you don't know what that is, so because the child has autism, she has some sensory overload, so she can't be in the gen ed PE class. She doesn't have any physical impairments, so she doesn't really require adaptive PE. But she's in adaptive PE because she can't tolerate being in the gym with 60 children in a loud environment. So the school offered, after about five meetings, to do reverse inclusion adaptive PE so that gen ed children will have the opportunity to give up one recess a week and participate in adaptive PE with her. And this has been successful at other schools and other places in the country. And there's actually a waitlist for the kids who want to participate, the neurotypical children who want to participate. So just like many of our schools, when the gen ed kids have a chance to visit the special ed classroom, it's a very popular activity. There's oftentimes a waitlist to do that as well. So I do applaud that school for agreeing to do reverse inclusion adaptive PE. But in terms of the inclusion in the least restrictive environment, it's not meaningful.
Do you have any comment on that? So is your recommendation to get rid of these centers or what is your recommendation?
Me personally? Well, see, I... you know, my personal belief is that inclusion works except when it doesn't. So in the ideal world, we... it would be inclusion for everybody, but it's just not reality. And there are times when there are children who, for instance, Quander Road, there are children who are having school refusal and significant anxiety and they're not going to attend school unless they're at a specialized program with other children with disabilities. I think also some children, high-functioning autistic children, have a very hard time in the gen ed environment. I think that many times they do better when they are with similarly situated children. I could say the same thing about dyslexia. There's a lot of studies that show children with dyslexia do better in programs when they're with fellow dyslexics. They share strategies. Their self-esteem doesn't suffer. So there's a lot of... it's very individualized, in my opinion. So Fairfax does get a ding because those numbers will... are hard to change. I would hope that Quander Road would be a stepping point to try to return a child to their base school or to a comprehensive services site to try to, you know, reintegrate them. But my bigger concern is about making sure that inclusion opportunities are meaningful and appropriate. There are students who can be in the gen ed environment with some pre-teaching. Goes back to what Ms. Schultz said at the earlier presentation. Block schedules are very difficult for students with disabilities. There are many students who need every class every day. If they have science on Thursday, they don't have it again until Monday. And kids who have processing issues, that information's gone. So there are students who need every class every day. So there are lots of things that can be done, but to answer the question, it's very individualized. And then in terms of preparing teachers, in a dream world, I would want every teacher to be prepared. And I would want every teacher to also be prepared on how to participate in an IEP meeting because teachers often say things that don't make a lot of sense. And I think that teachers didn't necessarily sign up for that, but they need to know how to maneuver through IEP meetings. And I do think that teachers need obviously training on restraint and seclusion. They need training on transition planning. Transition planning starts from the very beginning. Before, I was a special ed attorney. I was a professional chaperone and I went on every school trip. And I would always talk to the museum curator and say, "Tell the kids how you became a museum curator." When I do the eighth grade volunteering for the court tour, I have the sheriff and the judge talk to these students about what it takes to become a sheriff, what it takes to... how did you become a judge? How did you... you know, so all of that exposure starts at a very young age. So I think that a lot of our teachers need training on that. I personally get frustrated when I'm at a meeting and I... I personally get frustrated when I'm at a meeting and I have to propose something that's educational because I'm, I'm an attorney and I, I don't like when I know more about educational programs than, than the teachers. And, and I did have a conversation with someone at the George Mason Life Program and she said to me, if I could have one wish, it would be that every school have a special education director or advisor. So, so, and so that way you, that person could be in charge of educating the staff and making sure that, that all the policies and protocols are being followed. It's a big project, but, and I, I can tell you, I see a lot of inconsistencies throughout the county. I'm in a unique position of going to IEP meetings in all the regions and I see completely, and I see different attitudes. I, some meetings I walk into and I can tell they're not going to budge on anything, others, they're very collaborative. I've had teachers say, I'm so glad you're here, you always come up with good ideas. I've had other schools that there, it's a brick wall. So, and how to ensure fidelity of IEPs, that is a great question because I, my son is intelligent and he will come home and tell me he did not get accommodations. And we have children who are non-speaking who cannot come home and tell their parents that. So it is a big problem. And I, I think there's also a misunderstanding of the requirements when I have a special ed chairperson at a school say the child did not get their accommodations because they didn't ask for them, that there's a problem there because accommodate, you don't have to ask for your accommodations. So I, I think that we need to do some intensive training and, at all levels. And I think what Ms. Schultz said, sorry, I kept to keep bringing you up, but, but it made a lot of sense. But I think that some of the kids who drop out of college are also kids who were not appropriately identified as having special needs. So, and, and I personally know many, I call them the basement dwellers. I know many basement dwellers. And it's very sad when they've gone through Fairfax County and they've appeared to succeed and then, and then they flounder. So there, there's a gap there. So I don't know how to ensure fidelity other than if we had a special education supervisor at every school who was making sure that the IEPs are being followed or if we educate parents. Because the typical parent who receives an email that says, your child didn't ask for the accommodation, might say, darn, Billy, why didn't you ask for your accommodations? But a parent who's in the know would say, that's not right. So, so, so educating parents is also hard, but it's very difficult because when you have a child with a disability, it's draining, it's overwhelming. You, you're not doing fall sports, you're doing fall therapies. I mean, it's, it's, it's very hard, so.
I guess I was going to say with the, with the LRE, I think a lot of the schools really are, are trying to do that. And I think that some of the students that they're not doing that with, the goal is to get them back into, to general ed or in general ed more. I do think that the concept of feeling like the students will be included when they're quote, ready, is what I heard you say. And I think when staff is doing that, they're not being proactive enough. They're not being proactive enough to kind of prepare the child, get the child ready and get them in there. So I, I've seen that and I think that's a concern. Do we need to train all of the teachers? We certainly do if we're going to do inclusion. Are we going to do inclusion? Because if we're going to do inclusion and you put students, I taught general ed and you put students in there, I mean, I think we have lifelong learners, you know? I think those teachers are, and I think they want their kids to be successful. But when they look at what those accommodations are and in their professional opinion, they think those are enabling children and they think the parents are helicopter parents, then they don't want to cooperate with those accommodations. There's a built-in resistance. And I think with knowledge and training that we can, we can work through that issue. And in fact, I asked Rich Weinfeld, who's published many books on this related to the twice exceptional learners and has done staff development here and, and used to be the head of the twice exceptional program in Montgomery County. Why is this so hard for these gifted kids to get support and to get identified and get in the local schools? Like the district gets it, why is it so hard? And he said, well, I said, what, what do you think? And he said, it's all training and education. He said, once the local schools and the teachers and the people in the teams get, get the skills, then they no longer are, are oppositional. And I think my personal opinion is going into IEPs too, is that we don't, we don't train our principals enough. I'm sorry, I mean, I, the principals are powerful with, in Fairfax County with school-based management, they're almost omnipotent until something goes wrong. And, and they have a very strong influence on that IEP team. And I've had people, I've had people tell me that they don't agree with an IQ score of an outside provider. I've had people tell me that you can't have an AT assessment when you have a 504. And I don't, I'm assuming they think they know they're right and they simply are not knowledgeable. And, you know, so you say, okay, let's do a conference call with Cheryl Teague, you know, let's, I don't think that's right. Let's call over to her office and find out. But a lot of parents certainly don't know that and they don't know who to call if they did question it. So, and then, so I, I do think, yes, we need training, whether we do trickle down training, whether we do, I don't know how we do it. And then on ensuring fidelity, I think, I think those two are tied together. I think that if, you know, we have the PSLs and I think they are, some of them are doing an excellent job, very fine job. And, and I think just continuing to build that, strengthen that and, and increase the training in that for principals and the, and the people at those teams.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies. I have another question, but I'm not going to pose it because it's 10 of nine and I have other people on deck now. I have Tammy Darin at COFAx followed by Dahlia Palchek and then Megan McLaughlin and that's the end.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for this comprehensive report. I really, really do appreciate it. I have a question about how do you choose your subcommittees or are those part of the legally required advisory committee? Like, or did you make up your subcommittees based upon whatever the committee felt there was a need for? Cause, cause I have an idea for one, or asking maybe why you didn't make this one a priority.
Okay. We did it, we kind of looked at what the state SEAC was doing and used them as somewhat of a model because honestly, I've been on this committee a very long time and we didn't used to have a charge. We had a superintendent that created a charge for all of the advisory committees and he included us. And what I think I look back and reflect on is that we lost our way. And during that period of time, we simply redirected ourselves onto the charge. But that, we looked at the, what the state SEAC was doing. So if, you know, if you have another committee.
We are absolutely open to suggestions. And this was our first year, you know, modeling it this way. And I, I feel like it was successful, but I'm happy to take suggestions.
Well, part of my role here on the school board, I am, I was asked to be a liaison to the National School Boards Association to lobby efforts on behalf of school systems nationwide. So one of the big things was the IDEA and that's what one is, one of NSBA's major issue. You know, making sure we get adequate funding. As you know, we're supposed to be funded at 40% and as you know, here in Fairfax, we're funded, I, I, I don't know the right number, it's under 10. It's, yeah, it's under 10, I believe. So, so I, I.
Nowhere in the nation is it funded at 40%.
Exactly, exactly. But, but my, my point being Ms. Keys, Ms. Corbett Sanders did it a few, last year. I did it the year before that. I might've done it three times during my eight-year tenure. I'm often very lonely and I don't have adequate follow-up. And I'm thinking like this kind of group, your group, your subcommittee could be that conduit where the follow-up could be necessary, where we go in there and whoever is the, I don't know if I'll be the assigned person next year or not, but because I've done it a few times, it's very, very difficult, me, by myself really, and a half-time secretary to try to then get the information back to the congresspeople or to actually have a campaign of letter writing or something saying, you know, these are the things that we need and, and we, you know, we all know that we invest very well here in special education. We know we're not still where we need to be, but imagine how much better we would be if we even had a little bit higher percentage of funding and had, you know, and I can talk offline because I don't want to take time alone, I, I mean, out, out here doing this. But I, I do want to tell you what I've seen during these visits. I do want to tell you what I've heard. And I think it's important maybe that we have a subcommittee that deals with this, that deals with outreach to federal and state officials, talking about, you know, what, what we need and, and how we could.
Well, we have that subcommittee for policy and regulations.
Exactly, exactly. That's what I saw.
And we'd be happy to work with you, I think.
Right. That's what I envisioned for that committee, but since this was the first year and there was such a focus on restraint and seclusion, but that's how I'm envisioning that, that subcommittee.
Good, good, good. And, and even if I'm not the person, because I've done it a few times, I'd be happy to work with whomever to, to try to formulate a plan.
Ms. Darin at COFAx, I'll join you in that because I know we have shared this issue.
I, I fully support that. Thank you.
We have to announce it if we get together too many people. The sunshine law, we have to publicize it, but yeah.
Of course, but like I said, happy to talk offline at a later time.
Ms. Palchek?
Thank you. I'll be very briefly, thank you so much. And, and thank you for bringing up the principals. I think that's been my big, big takeaway and talk and conversation this year around training, not just our, our teachers, right? But our principals are the people responsible for all of this work in every single school. So when we talk about integrity of implementation, I don't think we can do it without having every single principal trained. And I've seen the difference going into my various schools.
And, and as you know, they've all been trained in these laws.
Not just the laws, right? But the, the best practices, what it should look like, feel like, et cetera, when you're seeing something done appropriately, et cetera. So I, I really, you know, I just want to reemphasize and thank you for saying that. I appreciate hearing that. And then, you know, I think it's a, it's a big conversation and kind of a starting point for where do we go with inclusion, with LRE? Similar, not that different from conversations we're having around other areas of specialized programming. And how do we set up every school and every classroom to be able to provide those services to make all parents and all kids feel comfortable that the least restrictive environment and every environment is able to achieve that? It's, it's a difficult conversation, right? Because you have a spectrum of needs and services, you know, across the board in every area. So, you know, I hope, and I appreciate you're, you're doing all the outreach and helping us gather more information so we can be better informed. And 100% agree with the recommendations to have more outreach and communications, even for us school board members. You know, if you can help us with blurbs and things, we can send in our newsletters when you have events coming up, you know, through our school board offices, the easiest way so that we can reach the community as well. And then, I just lost my thought on the final one. Yeah, it is a little bit late. It'll come to me, but if it doesn't, you know, it really, oh, the, one of them was the education summit. You know, I do think we, we've discussed that because we used to have an education summit separately, you know, and I, I think technology is a huge topic that we need to be able to, especially as we're going to expand FCPS on, be able to help address that and support parents and students across the board. So, you know, I, I'm fully supportive of the idea of trying to add, make it more of an inclusive across the board education summit without losing. I think that's the important part, not losing what's been critical, right, from that. So please let us know and, and I know I, I agree with Mr. Moon. I've had a challenge, I think every single year, my representative has decided not to continue serving. And so, you know, I do want to make sure that, that we maybe try to not limit it, but hopefully encourage them to stay on. So thank you so much and, and appreciate all the work you've done.
Ma'am, can I respond to your comment about the technology? Cause I did mean to include that, that there is also a disconnect in terms of assistive technology services, which is a huge problem. And it seems like principals and staff are not aware of what's available in the current environment. And many times assistive technology will provide the tools for the student, but will not ensure that the student is well-versed in how to use them. And so students are not using the assistive technology because it's very difficult, even though ultimately it would be easier. And, and many times assistive technology is referring the student back to the tools that are available in the current environment and they're actually not available in the current environment. And our principals and staff don't really know how to use assistive technology. So that's, I'm glad you brought that up.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I know we have a new head for that program and want to make sure we get that training out. And you reminded me, the other comment I was going to say is I once heard from a high school key club and their number one concern was feeling that in, in specials, they didn't feel that the teachers were trained enough to be able to be inclusive of students with special needs. And they wanted to see that improve. So absolutely across the board.
And there, there is, like she was saying, that Fairfax County approves a lot of things. They approve a lot of, you know, books or programs and whatever. Every school doesn't always have that program or have someone trained in that program or provide that simply because it's approved by the district. And I think with AT, what I've seen over some time is that AT is aware that, or there's a lot available out into the schools that's approved for the schools to use and they've, almost, it's almost as if they think everyone's using all of those. So if you have a, a child that you have an AT assessment and they look and they go, well, they could, they could use this software, that software, and it's available in the school, doesn't have to come through us, they'll decline the child, but they don't say, they don't say why or they don't say what, they don't say inspiration is available to everybody who don't need an AT assessment or that type of thing. They don't provide that kind of a, or at least I have not, I shouldn't say they don't. I should clarify that. I, at times they may not. And so therefore there isn't, what happens is the, the family feels that there's nothing available to them, even though the child needs help. So it, it can be a very uncomfortable and unpleasant situation and the child doesn't get the help that is available because.
Right. And we're, and Fairfax County is also under utilizing AIM Virginia, which is accessible instructional materials. And I have yet to go to an IEP meeting in Fairfax where the student had AIM Virginia. I was, I have to bring it up to the team and it's a free service and it's, it's very valuable. But I also have students who have AIM Virginia in their IEPs and you can go on and see how often they've opened it. And they, many of them have opened it once, which is the time that the assistive technology person gave them a password and showed them how to do it. But, you know, my kids say that I have chutzpah, which is a Jewish word for, for nerve, I guess. Cause I was at an IEP meeting where the AT person said that all the students' needs can be met in the current environment. So I pulled out my list of assistive technology services that are available in the current, in, in the school environment and went through the list with the principal and none of those things were available in the environment. So the student ended up, right, the student ended up being on the assistive technology caseload, which was not recommended previously, but there was a disconnect between assistive technology stating that her needs could be met in the current environment and the reality that those tools were not available in the current environment.
Thanks, Sheri. I have Ms. McLaughlin and then I have two go-backs that I'm going to limit to one and a half minutes each because we have another item we have to get to tonight. Okay. So Ms. McLaughlin, you do get three minutes because you haven't gone yet.
So, so here's the, the question I wanted to make sure we could discuss with you all tonight because we are creating that task force on restraint and seclusion. And I just, I know there's been a lot of conversation with our board about utilizing ACSD as a real resource to this. So two organizations that I had the privilege of meeting with the director and founder of the firm, Educational Advocacy and Consulting, Carol Demus. She is also a member of COPA, which is the Council of Parent Attorneys and Advocates. Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. So I bring this up because it's new to me and I think it's, both those organizations are probably new to many board members and I don't know how much our school division are probably new to many board members, and I don't know how much our school division knows about them, but it's my understanding, when I met with Carol Demus, that they work with school divisions. They're, they, they can come in and help us. And so as we get this task force, I had proposed that we certainly invite COPA and EAC, because EAC has an office in, in the Chicago area, but they also have an office in Ashburn, Virginia. So they're, they're here. And, but the ability to draw upon their national expertise in these areas, and everything we've been describing, you know, Sheri, you can't be all places and all spaces for our 200 schools and our families in need, and, you know, I have family members where they not only have had children with IEPs, but they've helped families with IEPs, because the experience was that it can be very intimidating. And one family member has a PhD, she not only had to really push and navigate her 504 meetings for, for basically people being in compliance with it, but then she was asked to help come in as an advocate to another family where English is a second language for the parent, there was a real discomfort in asserting oneself as a parent, and-
It's not part of their culture.
Correct. And, and my family member who, who experienced all that, of course, comes to me and says, hey, I know you're on the board, and I'm not gonna take the N of two as being everything, but, you know, let, let this inform your lens. And, and in the eight years I've been on the board, I wanna say to Mike Bloom, because Mike's been helpful to me in the past, when we needed to have extra supports, and so I appreciate DSS. Teresa, you know, you have a long line of, of leadership that has really been able to help us as board members when families come to us. And so it's appreciated, but I know we still have work to do. Central Office is very strong. Connie just said that. So Dr. Braybrand, that's your glow, and that's, you know, the, the-
The Central Office is knowledgeable and strong.
Knowledgeable and strong, and so, yeah.
McLaughlin, you got your three.
All right, thank you. So just, can you speak to those two organizations, what you know about them, and what you would recommend we do about them?
Can we speak offline on them?
That would be fine, and then we'll figure it out later.
Thank you. So now I have Ms. Keys-Gamara for a minute and a half.
I'll be really quick. The, you asked for an inbox, and I wanna make sure you get one. So, Dr. Braybrand, I don't know how we can hook that up, or how quickly we can, I, I find it interesting, I just can't believe that there, people think they're communicating with you, but they're not. So I wanna make sure that that happens right away. And then, Dr. Braybrand, I'd like to ask what kind of a follow-up we can have to this very extensive report. I know it raises a lot of questions, and there obviously are some things in place that maybe I, as a board member, may not be aware of, but I think that a follow-up to the things that have been raised today would be appropriate.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, after we presented for the first time the annual plan for IDEA to the board, and we just thought that might be a good idea, we did commit that in the future, we'll actually schedule a actual work session around that, and so perhaps marrying those two-
Binding those two things.
And we'll work to make sure that goes on the annual calendar.
Well, while we're here, I'd also like to mention, in the previous presentation, it just begged the question with respect to some of the things that we, I know, I believe, are going on with our equity office, you know, responding to some of the things where for advanced academics earlier. So if we could address the things that were raised, and have the board hear where we are, that would be awesome.
Thank you. And you did it in a minute and fifteen seconds, or seventeen seconds?
Yes.
So Ms. Schultz, you have a minute and a half.
I'll take this thirteen. I just wanna emphasize a couple of other things. On the inclusion, if, if we do inclusion, like, for example, I was at the SEPTA Awards, and the, there were students who were gen ed students, who received awards for their efforts to be inclusive as students with other students. That's actually the entire point, is, on the one hand, yes, to create a path for students to eventually, who, who have IEPs, to become productive, independent members of society. That's a, that's a beautiful thing, and a goal for us, but also to teach the other students the ability to be inclusive, and, and give them basically an opportunity to acquire some grace, and it's, it's an amazing thing. Dr. Braybrand, I'm just gonna have to say, how many times tonight I heard the issue of fear? And you know what our first meeting was like? The issue of fear around parents, and, and the, the IEP process is something that is a cultural problem that has to break. It is brutal to a parent, looking simply to get services for their child, to walk into a room, and the wall of FCPS is, is there in the presence of, you know, and I think we go well beyond what is mandated or even necessary. And you have everybody from the principal, to specialists, to, you know, I mean, everybody on the system side, and sometimes it's just a mom, or sometimes it's just a mom and a dad. And it is, it is an overwhelming experience, that that is one of, if I could offer a plea of the, one of the first things that we could do that would impact tens of thousands of families, is to find a way to, to soften that, that experience. I do wanna comment just briefly on the appointments. I'm gonna, I will own the problem of, I, I'm the one who made the motion to the rest of the board to move them to one year. It really was to facilitate something that Il Young had talked about, which is, look, we, we had a lot, we have a lot of turnover, we have elections, and the, the problem is on our side through the school board office, for us to simply have a standardized, this is the date by which we appoint people, and everybody gets that person on the calendar. And, and we can reappoint, but it's harder to remove somebody than it is to appoint someone. And so the notion of having an annual renewal was something that the board all collectively agreed upon, so, and we would have to change our governance manual to do what you're asking. So I think what you're really asking us is to have better fidelity, fidelity to our own practice of making sure that people are appointed on, on the consent agenda, on the correct date. And, and we own that, that's on us, we need to do that. I know, I know.
And you've gone, got a minute and a half extra.
One, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to do this last thing. This is also, we don't think about things like supersized schools, and supersized classrooms, and supersized cafeterias, where there may be not a high FRM population, but for a special needs student, who may have processing problems, or auditory problems, sensory problems, walking into a supersized classroom or cafeteria is overwhelming, and we are excluding them by default with some of our supersized approaches. And so that's the, I'll, I'll go on that last word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies, this has been incredible. Mr. Bloom, thank you very much. We appreciate all you do on behalf of our students and our school system. Ms. Palchek is actually going to run the next part of this meeting on calendar, and she's hiding over there. You can't hide from me. I'm teasing you.
Can we have a break for just a couple of minutes?
Yeah, I think we should take a five-minute break. We will reconvene at 9:20.